What? About. Thanks. On.
Would everybody please rise? Attention for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Word.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Blue stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, for the realmarty watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
On. Please. Oh, march.
Board meeting. Excellent job by the JROTC in Knox Central Choir. And we're gonna have a Christmas performance. As you know, last week, we had to postpone the art festival. And they rescheduled for Thursday. And we thought that they should come to the board and also present and share with us some sounds of the season. So, Ms. Schuman?
[Music] 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 [Music]
What excellent talent we have. So, Ms. Schuman, would you come up? Because we have a few members that have one distinct pleasure of being part of the KMEA All-State Choir. So, if you will, we will introduce those students.
Just kinda mention their names. Okay. Well, our students have won some awards and won some auditions to be able to sing and participate in some groups. I'm gonna start with All Festival. It's called SKMA All Festival Choir. And we had, actually, everyone who auditioned made it, which is great. And so, I just wanted to recognize them. And if you guys just kinda give a wave when I say your name. And there are a few who are in another choir, so not everybody's here. We had, in our SSA Women's Choir for sopranos, we had Sharon Brock, Emily Cooper, Megan Deaton, and Emily Wilder. And as alto, we had Michaela Messer and Janessa Spencer. And then, we had a mixed choir, which had both men and women in it. And by the way, for both of these choirs, we just had excellent renowned conductors. And so, it was really exciting. And in our mixed choir for our sopranos, we had Tegan Chadwell and Christina Vaughn, Rayleigh Golden, and Cadence Spencer, Travis Hensley, Matthew Merida, Logan Napier. And our basses were Kyle Martin and also Landon Wallace. And so, those all, all of these students, it was 15 of them, participated in All Festival, which is kind of like All District, you know, for sports. And so, we're really proud of them. Let's give them a round of applause. And then, probably the highest honor that anyone can attain who's in a choir throughout our state and actually throughout the country is to be able to go to All-State Choir. And it is really tough to get in. They have very rigorous auditions that are very difficult. And then, it's really hard to be selected. And so, we're so proud that we have four who won that audition from Knox Central High School and get to participate this year. It will be, it will be happening this coming February, so it hasn't happened yet. And so, they'll tell the tales later, you know, about how wonderful it was. But it's always just like the height of what you can do. And so, the four who made it this year are in the KMEA All-State High School Choir, which is grades 10 through 12. We had Matthew Merida. And Matt, go ahead and step up. We have a certificate for you. Yes. And how about if you just step kinda to the center? We'll get all four of you there. Okay. And then Travis Hensley. And both of them will be tenors singing in the men's chorus. And they always want to sing in that one. It's really awesome. And so, they're very thrilled about that. And then, we were so happy to find out that we had two ninth graders who were selected to be in the, it's called the Kentucky Junior High Chorus. And this is grades 7 through 9. We have Emily Cooper, who's a soprano. And can you gentlemen step over so Emily can join? And Rayleigh Golden, an alto. So, let's give them a really big round of applause because we're so proud of them.
Keeping with the fine arts theme, I would like to introduce Mr. Darrell Dixon with the band program.
Hello, I'm Darrell Dixon. I'm the band director for Knox County. Thank you, board members and superintendent, for recognizing these fine young ladies and gentlemen this afternoon. I have two students who made it into the SKMA Southeastern Kentucky Music Educators Association Honors Band. And these characters, I've not had anybody audition for about three years. I don't know what happened. Everybody got scared. But I said, "Boys, we can do this." So, they go up against, I think it was 12 schools from different districts. And they have to earn a seat in one of the bands. And they have to audition for it. Now, the auditions are blind auditions. So, the judges, you're coming in there looking like this. And that may not seem scary until you have to put that trumpet or your saxophone to your face. And then, you're nervous. And it's really like a hardcore job interview. This is a wonderful thing for these characters. I had two children make it, two children audition, and two children make it. And here they are in order of tallest to shortest. Corey Pardon on the tenor saxophone, and Mr. Hunter Carr on the trumpet.
At the beginning of the meeting, we had the JROTC present the colors. And they have really been busy lately, starting with the school year off by earning a unit of distinction honor for their battalion. Then, as we move forward to the end of the semester, they got to present at the inaugural festivities in Frankfurt for our new governor. So, that's in between of everything else they do in our community and for our school. So, at this time, I would like to introduce their two instructors, Command Sergeant Major Hembry and Parsons. Yep. And the Colonel.
And the Colonel.
And the Colonel. Didn't know you was here tonight.
Yeah. You know what's behind your back.
Exactly. Mr. Shakup.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Sprinkles and the board there because what these kids do, they can't do without your support. And your support has been great. And these kids have done great things. Also, the principals who support his presence, they have. Now, a lot may not realize that this program, yet it's not been here that long compared to a lot of them. This program was started by the National Defense Act in 1960. That's been a long time ago. So, 1960 is drawn into the largest character development and citizen program for youth in the world with over 314,000 cadets each year in schools in the United States and overseas from Guam, Virgin Islands, and to Europe. Now, here, like I said, in the short time we've been here, we've had over 1,500 cadets. That's been through this program. And the purpose of this program is to make basically better citizens out of these students. And I really feel that's been a success. I had no idea how easy it would be to work with the type of students that we have. It makes the job easier. You give them a little guidance, and they'll go a long way. And they've proven this. And one way they've proven this is that every three years, there's what's called a program accreditation that has to take place with all units all over the United States and overseas. And that's over 1,700 units with over 3,000, 300,000 cadets. Well, as we mentioned here, the honor unit with distinction is only given out less than 10% of the time. Well, so, when they came done the inspection, it was basically in the hands of the cadets. Now, they looked at their structures, looked at the facilities, and then the briefings and everything was handled totally by the cadets. So, when it came up, they scored over 95%, which is less than 10%. We'll get that honor, like I said, over 1,700 units all over the world, wherever the law can see it exists. So, to motivate young people to do, be a better citizen, like I said, I think they have completed that. And they're an honor to work with. So, I can't say enough. It's like I said, my, one of my last missions that I was in Afghanistan, I thought that I could not do anything better than what was happening there, being a soldier. But I was wrong. I was afraid I wouldn't get the opportunity to be able to heal and touch lives again like I did in that country. But now, I have an opportunity again, and I appreciate the opportunity.
On behalf of the board, the students that are proud of our new cadets. Board members, have a view of what this is made with hand and hands.
Yep. Lead all the cadets up here.
Real sergeant, Sergeant Major.
He's got a little injury.
Can you sit here?
Yeah. Go ahead.
It has to be a murder to mess up a show.
This is all part of being in JROTC, practicing, practicing, practicing. So, we're gonna get good at taking pictures.
Coming from being principal at Knox County Middle School and watching this JROTC program, I personally got to witness students who I had at the middle school. And then, after they've come through, up here, come through that program, just amazing change that you would see in those, in those young men and women is phenomenal. And it sold me early on on JROTC. And you don't do that without good leadership. And you've got some gentlemen back there that are proven leaders that do an amazing job with these people. So, I wanna, again, I wanna thank you all for the job that you do to support these kids.
At this time, we're gonna talk sports. I think we have the elementary boys tournament happening right now in the gym. So, we're gonna rewind a little bit back to spring. We're gonna talk a little bit about the fall sports, and I guess everything in between. So, athletic director, Mr. Jeff Kennedy, will assist me up at the podium for this.
Well, I wanna thank everybody for being here. And if you see me, I'll dodge back and forth. But going on what Mr. Sprinkle said real quick while we got the cadets still back here, I could not do my job as athletic director without them. And he's already laughing because he knows what I'm gonna tell him. When I say nobody gets through the gate at the end except ambulance or police, even if you're the superintendent and you pull up, they make you go around. And I love it. So, but anyway, one more round of applause for those young ladies and gentlemen. All right. Real quick, I'm gonna brag on us real quick. In our county, Link Camp, Knox Middle, Knox Central, all of our elementary schools, I know you all have seen over the last several years, the success that all of our programs have been having. And at Knox Central, I'm very proud that right now, we're currently offering more sports than any school in the 13th region, than anybody. Now, not just offer them, we're very competitive. And as I told the Courier-Journal a while back, when we pull up in the parking lot, you know Knox Central's there. Not because of a bad thing, but because you know you're gonna have to play your tail off to compete with us because we're gonna give you all we got. Link Camp, same thing. They've done a great job the last several years. Knox Middle, all over the state, I mean, like I said, the things that we've done over the last several years that our name is recognized statewide is amazing. And as you all know, we just started wrestling. The kids just came back from Franklin County Saturday and tied ninth in the, in the tournament. And we're talking about 20, 30 something teams that are, been going for 20, 30 years. So, that's just amazing. And it shows, just like some of our cadets and some of the ladies and gentlemen are sitting in here. The reason we are successful in what we do is we have kids that do multiple sports. They don't just hone in on one thing. And as a parent out there, just give me some advice. Research me if you think I'm wrong. If your kid wants to play at the next level, coaches recruit multiple sport athletes. That's just a fact. 99% of the D1 coaches will tell any coach, any parent, "We're looking for a multiple, multi-sport athlete." And the reason is very simple. If you do this every day, 1,000 times a day, this is gonna break down. So, you gotta rest it. And you train other parts of your body and your instincts. That's what they do. And that's why it is important to play more than one sport, at least two. I mean, we'd love for you to play four or five, but it's not possible. But with that being said, I just want you all to know that we couldn't do this without the support of the board, the superintendent, the principals. I mean, the coaches worked their tails off, the A.D. works his tail off. But we have a big community that puts together all this work, and these kids are taking advantage of it. And we are becoming successful every year, year in and year out. And I'm just very proud of that. And I'd like for you all to give yourself a round of applause.
And it's hard to, who we gonna win?
And now, we'll get started with some track. Mr. Gerald Wilder, come on up.
I would like to recognize six athletes that qualified and made it to state last year. Not only did they make it to state academic wise also, and as far as athletic abilities, most of these people have been up there to state last two or three years in a row. We have a, a few that qualified that went to middle school state. They went four years of high school to state. And I've got two that's already graduated. And they signed scholarships to colleges. And we've only got three that's here tonight. I'd like to call up Mr. Lucas Lambo. And while he's coming up, I would like to say that he is, went to middle school, qualified for state at middle school. Not only that, but he's went all four years in high school. He also, this year at state competitions, he finished eighth in the state throwing the shot. He also finished eighth in the state throwing the disc. He also received the award of academic all-state. To become an academic all-state, you have to have a 3.75 grade point average or better. And he also signed to go to Cumberland College, and he is there now participating in track and field. There you go. And I'd also, I'd also like to invite his brother, Logan, up here. And Logan also went to middle school state. He is a sophomore. This is his second year qualifying and going to state. He does pole bowling. And he was also academic all-state honorary mention. To attain this, you have to have a 3.5 grade point average to a 3.74 grade point average. And congratulations on that. Also, I would like to call up Ms. Abby Phillips. And she also went to middle school state. This is her second year she went to state in triple jump. And she's also, this is her third year being academic all-state. And that is what she has been up here for. Also, we've got three that are not here. One is Janelle Reed, and she qualified in long jump. And well, I don't know what happened, but she said she would be here. And the others, Caleb Tig, went and qualified in triple jump. And then, he was academic all-state honorary mention. And he signed a scholarship for Union College. He's doing track and cross-country there. Also, Amber Brown, she's not here. She had a previous engagement. But she finished, she went in two events, triple jump and high jump. She finished fourth in the state. She was recognized as second team all-state in track. She is also academic all-state in track. This is her fourth year as academic all-state in track. She also, this year, set a new school record. She also, this year, set a new school record in triple jump. She had helped the previous record of 32 feet, one and a half inches, and she broke that record this year for, I think it was 32 feet and nine inches. She also holds the school record for high jump, which is 5'3", and she also was academic all-state, and she signed a scholarship to Georgetown College. So I think out of the seniors that graduated this year, we had at least six that signed to our college. We had a couple, three that went to Cumberland College, three that went to Union, one went
And as you all can tell, we're very proud that, you know, we have student athletes
to Georgetown.
that not only enjoy the sport and thrive at the sport that they're in, but they're also
And I want to thank each and every one of them, they've been awful good students, they've been awful good athletes, and they've been a representative Knox Central High School
getting some of their college or college paid for in full at the next level, and that's
at state academics and athletics. Thank you.
just icing on the cake, so that's awesome. Our next group we're going to introduce, I know I've seen the coaches over here, Knox Middle School softball, if you guys come on up and tell us a little bit about your season, thank you.
Hi, I'm Daniel Williams, this is our group here. Real proud of these girls, we don't have many here today, we've got a lot involved with basketball and KYA and cheerleading and different things, so we only had these three come. But just real quick with these girls, like I said, real proud of them, just a great group of kids. Got to win over 20 games last year with only playing four home games, I mean, I think it just says a lot about their toughness right there with that, you know, our tournament being the regional runner-ups, had to play four games in one day with the 90 degree weather, and you know, and these girls didn't complain and just kind of toughed it out and went through it, so made me real proud to be a part of them. We'll go ahead and introduce you to them here. We've got Alexandria Roark. Sidney Hurst. Madison Jones. We've got Coach Kirby Jones. David Baylor.
Well, I wanted to thank all the athletes that were able to come out and tell us a little bit about your season, thank you.
I'm Daniel Williams, this is our group here. Real proud of these girls, we don't have many here today, we've got a lot involved with basketball and KYA and cheerleading and different things, so we only had these three come. But just real quick with these girls, like I said, real proud of them, just a great group of kids. Got to win over 20 games last year with only playing four home games, I mean, I think it just says a lot about their toughness right there with that, you know, our tournament being the regional runner-ups, had to play four games in one day with the 90 degree weather, and you know, and these girls didn't complain and just kind of toughed it out and went through it, so made me real proud to be a part of them. We'll go ahead and introduce you to them here. We've got Alexandria Roark. Madison Jones. We've got Coach Kirby Jones. David Baylor.
Well, I wanted to thank all the athletes that were able to come out and tell us a little bit about your season, thank you.
Well, I wanted to thank all the athletes that were able to come out and all the coaches and players to come on up, round of applause for them.
all for allowing us to coach these girls, it's a real blessing, you know, it's just, I'd say it's a blessing to be able to stand and do this, and then try to teach these girls just a little bit what we know about the sport that we love, and unfortunately, we only had one show up, and it's mine, so, but we also want to help, or thank Daniel for allowing us to help him, you know, he's, it's a real honor to be able, like I said, to be able to stand and do this, and our team, I think we had 11 girls, and we started off at the tip-off tournament, won it, we went through the local conference, went 9-0 in it, so a perfect season, and then won the conference tournament, so you know, perfect season. And really proud of our 11 girls that we had that stuck with us, and the hard work and dedication they put in for it, so, but we just want to thank you all for allowing us to be able to do this.
Okay, for our next bunch, I see Coach McDonald, we're going to go with our Lady Elementary School A Team Champions, the Lady Trojans, come on up, coaches and players.
Well, this is a team sport, and these girls are the epitome of team. If you look up on this stage, I started with 15 girls this year, just me, that's tough. A lot of times, you try to give those kids some lessons about character and adversity and coming when times are tough, and when things don't go your way, but every time I've stepped up to do something like this, I've come far ahead of the lessons that I could ever teach them. Girls, it's, what's special about basketball is it's never personal to pick kids up that's on the other team and hugs after the games. There are boys I see, you know, that they think they've lost the World Cup champion, you know, they're crying, and the end of the world's going to happen, not with these girls, and that's been a lesson that I've taken home. Day one, I told these girls, you have 100% control of how hard you play, you don't have to hit every shot, you don't have to not have turnovers and make mistakes, that's going to happen, that's sports, but you always have 100% control of how hard you play. This group behind me, I never had to get on them for playing hard. This group was on you from the tip to the buzzer and everywhere in between. Players make coaches look great, and there's some players coming up right here through the system that's going to make you proud. They represented their community in the right way, they represented their coach in the right way, they didn't complain when they didn't go their way, and they were gracious when they won, and they won, won well. I'm so proud of them and been glad to be a part of it.
Okay, I've got one more group here tonight, and I don't know, why are you all getting up? Oh, you think it's you? Okay. No, it is them. It's our Knox Central Cheerleaders, and I don't know if I can actually begin telling you all the things they've actually won in the last couple of years, so we're only going to tell you what they've won up to date this year, which is a UCA Bluegrass Champions, KPOS Region Runner-Up, and the WYMT Mountain Classic first place. They're also going to Disneyland to compete in the Nationals, and they're also competing in the Region Tournament in March. So, but I'm going to let Ms. Joy McKinnn tell us a little bit more about the ladies.
Well, there's not a whole lot I can say, it's all the girls that put in all the hard work. I want to take time to especially thank Kayla Smith, my assistant coach, and Paula Grubbe has been helping me as well, there's been several other ladies. I'd like to brag on Mr. Kennedy, as well as our administration staff here at the high school, along with Tina Sizemore, who we could not make it without here at this high school, I don't think this high school could run without her, but we want to thank all of them. We couldn't do anything that we do here at our high school without them, and we also want to make a special thank you to the board, we couldn't do what we're doing without the board and their support and their hard work. But going back to the girls, the girls are the ones that put in all the hard work, the hours, we go about four to five days a week, whether it's practice or games, we've tried to leave the weekends to as much of our time off as possible, but we've been very busy. It's been a long weekend this weekend, but these girls didn't complain one bit, we left on Friday to go up and compete, and stay for the state competition on Saturday, and these girls didn't hesitate one bit for us to go back and to be there for us to win at the WYMT. I personally have been the past three years with WYMT, not as the coach, but for the past two years, and to my knowledge, I don't know that we have won that competition, and so we were very thrilled to win that with first place. And the girls had a wonderful season last year, I had 13 girls that returned to me this year, and there's just so many things I can stand here and tell you all, but I know you all have got lots of things that you all need to be doing, but these are a wonderful group of girls, and we're very thankful to have them here at Knox Central and to be able to coach them, and we look forward to the rest of the season and getting ready for Nationals, for us to go on to Disney World, and to prepare for the district and hopefully the region in the spring. So we want to say Merry Christmas to all of you all, and thank you all for everything you all do. We want to especially thank Frank, Frank has always been very supportive and helpful too as well, so I hope we've not left anybody out.
Okay, girls, on your knees, everybody hold hands right in front of you, just like this regular is. Everybody nice and straight, tall, be in between somebody. All right, second row, squat down just a little bit, make sure everybody's.
She's got to take one down low.
Am I going to have to squat?
Okay, I'll squat.
and parents that support them, and like I said, we Okay, I've got one more group here tonight, and I don't know, why are you all getting up?
(inaudible)
Oh, you think it's you? Okay. No, it is them. It's our Knox Central Cheerleaders, and I don't know if I can actually begin telling you all the things they've actually won in the last couple of years, so we're only going to tell you what they've won up to date this year, which is a UCA Bluegrass Champions, KPOS Region Runner-Up, and the WYMT Mountain Classic First Place. They're also going to Disneyland to compete in the Nationals, and they're also competing in the Region Tournament in March. So, but I'm going to let Ms. Joy McKinnn tell us a little bit more about the ladies.
Well, there's not a whole lot I can say. It's all the girls that put in all the hard work. I want to take time to especially thank Kayla Smith, my assistant coach, and Paula Grubbe has been helping me as well. There's been several other ladies. I'd like to brag on Mr. Kennedy as well as our administration staff here at the high school, along with Tina Sizemore, who we could not make it without here at this high school. I don't think this high school could run without her, but we want to thank all of them. We couldn't do anything that we do here at our high school without them, and we also want to make a special thank you to the board. We couldn't do what we're doing without the board and their support and their hard work. But going back to the girls, the girls are the ones that put in all the hard work, the hours. We go about four to five days a week, whether it's practice or games. We've tried to leave the weekends to as much of our time off as possible, but we've been very busy. It's been a long weekend this weekend, but these girls didn't complain one bit. We left on Friday to go up and compete and stay for the state competition on Saturday, and these girls didn't hesitate one bit for us to go back and to be there for us to win at the WYMT. I personally have been the past three years with WYMT, not as the coach, but for the past two years, and to my knowledge, I don't know that we have won that competition, and so we were very thrilled to win that with first place. And the girls had a wonderful season. Last year, I had 13 girls that returned to me this year, and there's just so many things I can stand here and tell you all, but I know you all have got lots of things that you all need to be doing, but these are a wonderful group of girls, and we're very thankful to have them here at Knox Central and to be able to coach them. And we look forward to the rest of the season and getting ready for Nationals, for us to go on to Disney World, and to prepare for the district and hopefully the region in the spring. So, we want to say Merry Christmas to all of you all, and thank you all for everything you all do. We want to especially thank Frank. Frank has always been very supportive and helpful too as well, so I hope we've not left anybody out.
(inaudible)
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 Well, I wanted to thank all the athletes that were able to come out and all the coaches and parents that support them, and like I said, we do have a lot going on tonight. We got elementary tournament going on, we have practices going on, teams getting ready to travel, so we are proud of our kids, and again, we couldn't do what we do without the support of the parents, we couldn't do it without the support of the board and superintendent, our administration here, the principals, but most support we couldn't do without the kids, and we got a great bunch of them, so thank you all and Merry Christmas.
(applause)
(inaudible)
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 Mr. Chairman, we have no public comment, so we can move on with communications. I think we need to say a prayer.
(mn) Mr. Ralph Alkman, would you say the prayer?
Sure. We pray with, dear him and Father God, we thank you, Lord, for allowing us to come here tonight, God. We thank you for all these young people, Lord, who have been celebrating tonight for their accomplishments in the classroom, on the athletic field, the ballboards, God. We just want to thank you, Lord, for our Board of Education here, all our leaders who are present tonight, God, and I just pray that you'll be with our board as they make important decisions for this school system, Lord, and just help them to make the decisions that are right and best for us as a county, God. And, Lord, I just pray that we can give you the honor and glory through it all. In Jesus' name I pray.
Amen. He needs to call the order, don't he? Yeah, go ahead, call the order. (noise) Now called, December 16, 2019, Knox County Board of Education meeting order. So, we had no remarks, so Scott Snot here, Amanda.
So, shorter yet again, the last of the materials, which are the pole lights for Central Elementary, have arrived with the contractor, so as soon as, I guess, weather allows, they'll be getting those up. And our, I call him our lighting guru, can't even remember his real title, but he's been working with your IT group, who has been absolutely wonderful. He's going to continue working with them tomorrow so we can get everything set up to get these pole lights on a schedule for you. So, I ask you, Mr. Sprinkles, if you'll just start thinking about who you want to have the power to access that system. I don't know, principals, coaches at the high schools might be a good idea.
Yeah.
But other than that, that's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yeah. Give her a second. The only question I've got is this. All right, and I didn't see this when he gave it to me, but it says it needs to be signed after board approval, and he didn't give this to me to get on the agenda this month. So, is it something that we can approve in January and then sign off on?
Yeah.
I didn't either, but, okay. Take them.
Give her a second.
This is the closeout, the substantial closeout on that project, BG4. Scott, well, it says local Board of Education designated. He put in his notes to sign after board approval, but now he didn't put this on the board agenda.
This is regular made.
This is regular made.
Okay.
And you can do one motion, the hand, and motion to the board. Okay, that's what we'll do then, so we'll just add it to the item. Maybe I need to wait around a few minutes there. So, when we get to, you're there, aren't you?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, so adopt the agenda and just add BG4 for the energy savings contract.
So, we can get that before we adopt the agenda?
Well, when you make a motion to adopt the agenda, add that, say, in addition at this item.
You want me to do it, Bill?
I'll make the motion add. All right, so he'll make the motion add the BG4. Motion to adopt agenda?
Mr. Chairman, before we adopt the agenda, I'd like to make a motion that we add the BG4 to the agenda.
Mr. Henkel?
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Henkel?
What are we, what they adopting?
It's basically a closeout document. It's a BG4 for the energy savings project. Yes. I vote yes. Mr. Henkel?
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Dr. Ashburn?
Yes.
Okay. I missed that one. You want to do it now? Okay. Mr. Frost?
I will not take a lot of your time. I do appreciate you all being here. I think you saw a lot of the greatness of Knox Central High School, and so I won't go over a lot, but in front of you, there is a report I want to share with you and go over briefly. One of the things we talk about here at Knox Central is greatness, and to be great, we have to have a great team, and as you saw through the recognitions, a lot of leadership, a lot of great things are happening here, and that's because of a great team, whether it's the leadership team, or coaches, or athletes, the ROTC program, FFA, or any of the many other programs, a lot of greatness is happening here. Some of the things I want to celebrate and draw your attention to, we were recognized as a three-star rating. We removed the TSI label from our identification, so three-star and removed the TSI label. Over the past year, or two years, we've reduced our failure rate school-wide by almost half, and for the freshmen, we have reduced it by half, which is always an early indication of dropout, is the failure rate in that freshman year. So, those are two things I'm very proud of. We've reduced our major discipline referrals over the years. This past year, we were able to increase our attendance by 1.26% increase, and that was the first increase in four to five years at Knox Central High School, maybe longer than that. We've also, as Mr. Kennedy mentioned, a lot of new things always happening here, and we're very proud of those things, one of which was our National Honor Society. We started a National Honor Society. That is the first chapter that Knox Central High School's ever had. We've also started our wrestling and esports, so very excited about all of that, and as he said, Mr. Kennedy said, offering more extracurricular activities in Kentucky High School Athletic Association than any other school in the region and many schools around the state. Extremely proud of that. So, our testing there, there are many numbers, I'll just go over those quickly. Main thing is, I want you to know our next steps in moving forward from this. Our overall rating was a 62.4, and that's identified by the state. You can see where we were the year before, so we actually gained, when everything was put together, we actually showed some growth from the previous year. Our proficiency rating, which was past two years have been based on the ACT, and that is in reading and math, we're pretty flatlined there based on the ACT results, and you'll be able to drill down and see a little bit more on a few other slides, but pretty flatline in reading and math. However, our other academic indicators, which is another area that we get scored upon, identified by our science test and writing, on-demand writing that occurs their junior year, we show growth in, and we showed improvement that we're pleased to report. Transition readiness. Transition readiness is our college readiness or our career readiness. College readiness is determined by the ACT or successfully passing a dual-credit course in some way. You can see a rather large jump there, and our transition readiness score is much higher than the state average. I'm pleased to report about that as well. And we're also starting to generate, which I think is very exciting, and I think there'll be more to come, more and more work-based experiences being considered career-ready. So, we got students already here at Knox Central High School that own their own business, and because of that, they develop a portfolio, and they are identified as career-ready because of their work-based experience, and I think there's more to come with that, and I'm very excited about that for our kids and that opportunity, and I think it's always a good thing to instill the value of work. So, very pleased with that. Graduation rate, you can see there, pretty flatline, but as compared to the state average, we are higher than the state average with our graduation rate. Then we get into the ACT scores, and these are based on percents, and so the benchmark there, you can see for English is 18. You can see the percent that met benchmark on the ACT. This is for juniors, the last year's juniors, they're currently seniors. The next page is reading, the benchmark is 20. You can see our percent there, and also you can see the trends. I wanted you to see the trends over many years here of what's happening with the ACT here at Knox Central High School. Finally, the math, you can see the percent there, the benchmark is 19. Our science, now this is not based on the ACT, this is based on the other academic indicators. It's a test created by Pearson and given to the junior class, and you can see the increase we made there from the 17, 18 school year. And same way with our on-demand writing. And then, I wanted to show you the long-term graduation rate and where it's been throughout the years at Knox Central High School. One of the things that we find ourselves challenged with, harder and harder to get any higher on the ACT, is the alternate assessment, and those students do not count as graduates when they go through the alternate assessment process, so in some ways, it penalizes us to have, when we have students who go the alternate assessment track, and as a result, you know, we graduate five to eight a year, and that's why it's almost impossible to hit 100% on graduation rate. So, that's something, but that's the rules of the game that we've been given by the state, but you can see the trends there with our graduation rate. So, where do we go from here? And let's look at what's, the work must go on. I say quite often, we are pleased with our results, but we are not satisfied. We want to be a four-star and move on to a five-star and continue to grow in each and every area. So, we are pleased with our results with this new accountability system, but by far, we are not satisfied. So, the work that's taken place, last year, had the opportunity to take part in Solution Tree. The board paid for all principals to go to the PD Conference Solution Tree, and it's a holistic look at how you instruct. And one of the things that came to light for me was the encouragement of creating a guided coalition, a group of teachers to work alongside of you to vet and increase buy-in and just help in many different ways. And so, coming back, that was one of the first activities we started, was to establish a guiding coalition, and so this is a new approach with our leadership team. We historically have had a leadership team, that was assistant principals, guidance counselors, curriculum coaches, and so on, but this team of people is primarily teachers in the classroom, and they're coming alongside of us, and we're talking about instructional strategies and the important instructional strategies. So, this group of people that we brought together had a retreat last summer, they've already led a PD with our teachers about instructional strategies. You can see some of them listed there. They've also led the work in establishing our new mission and vision, and one of the things, collective commitments, similar to belief statements or values, but this is something that we believe wholeheartedly, that all of us are collectively committed to, and so we've been working to define those. We're going to spend the spring releasing that information and sharing that, the new mission, vision, and collective commitments. We also have been revamping our class assignments for special populations. We want more of our special population students to be in regular classes, hearing the core instruction, and then getting support from interventionists. We really, really, really want to create independence here at Knox Central High School, and so for our special populations, that's creating a little more independence there for them to be successful. There's been a little bit of growing pains, but the buy-in is high, and it's getting better with each day and each week in our special population groups. And then, we want to continue the work with ILEAD. I'm sure you're familiar with that here at Knox Central. It's been transformational for us as a school. In our ILEAD groups, we focus on three-week goal setting. You know, sometimes when we talk about your grade nine weeks from now, that's hard for a kid to think about, or your grade by Christmas, and it's August, that's hard for them to think about. So, we're trying to chunk this out in three-week segments of academics, you know, are you not scoring the grade you want to score? Are your behaviors causing that? Maybe your attendance is causing that, and establishing a goal for three weeks to try to improve, and we can see the work in that by our improved overall attendance. Also, our ILEAD group creates two adult advocates with our Partner Core Program and our teachers. We have two adult advocates that are there to support every kid. One of the things, when we went through our audit with Advanced Ed, that they were most impressed with, they said they have never seen a systematic approach to mentoring and supporting kids with two adult advocates for every kid at Knox Central High School, or any school that they go to throughout the country. This ILEAD time, we develop incentives for attendance, maybe no referrals, behavior referrals. We have class officers that speak to the teachers and principals, so there's a bridge built there, and then we have a lead curriculum that provides financial literacy, employability skills, college language, and then teamwork activities, so we're all very important. And then, of course, we want to continue focusing on our high-yield instructional strategies, the CAGEN, the cooperative groups, summarizing, note-taking, and all of those high-yield instructional strategies that should create success for our students. And then, as a faculty and staff, we do a lot of book studies here, and we want to continue that because that creates a common language amongst us as a staff. The two in italics, the coach approach and clarity, are book studies we're working towards. We've not gotten there yet, but the other ones, you can see some of the readings that are taking place right here at Knox Central High School. Again, I appreciate the opportunity, and I hope you saw the greatness of Knox Central with all the kids up here, and I will take any questions if you have.
All I can say is you need to keep up the good work. Thanks, sir. We've seen a lot of good things happening here at Knox Central in all aspects, academically, athletically, and a lot that he's been doing with culture, building culture within the school, so a lot of improvement. Refresh your agenda. Frank's added that. Oh, you need to refresh that. It may be a three-second.
If we have a motion to adopt the agenda, add the...
Well, we'll modify it before we adopt it.
Charles, I'll second it.
I made the motion, and he seconded.
So, we can skip seeing it?
No, just read out this one.
Yeah.
Actions by the senior.
Actions by the senior.
Action by consent.
I make the motion, we accept action of consent.
I second.
I vote yes, Mr. Meredith.
Yes.
Ms. Runyon.
Yes.
Dr. Ashburn.
Yes.
Mr. Hinkle. Item 3, discuss facility operations. Discuss and undertake action on bid for mowing services 2020.
Okay, you have in front of you the bids that were submitted for the mowing contract for the upcoming year. And it's low, slowly. The low bid was Merida Lawn Care.
I'd like to make a motion that we would consider County Boy Lawn Service's bid.
I second the motion. Ms. Runyon.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, real quick on this thing. I went through these bids on this process too. And the Country Boy Lawn Service, if you go down there and look at the bottom, or you have to turn in all the details and everything, they don't have the proper insurance, almost. They don't have work comp insurance, nor do they have a liability policy. Before we can accept a bid for that, it has to go by the guidelines that we bid for this. Plus, I mean, they're, like I said, they're not the low bid on this thing either, so. You have to go down there and look down where their bid process is down there. There's a Post-it note on the work comp on it that says that they'll obtain work comp insurance once they get the bid. But, our stipulations and thing says at the top right here is, "The contractor must meet," I'm looking, reading it right here off the thing, "must meet the following insurance requirement requirements: $100,000 contract liability insurance, and $250,000 worth of workers' compensation employee liability insurance." He doesn't have neither one of those yet.
If he did, if it don't require what he's doing right now, and he has put in for the bid, now, shouldn't we do a stipulation that if he has awarded this contract, then he must have it within a certain time? Because we've got three, what, three months before he's ever called to do a lawn service.
I'm just, like I said, I'm just going by what it says right here. You know, contractor must meet the following insurance requirements.
Is that before or after he gets the contract?
He doesn't stipulate.
Doesn't stipulate. But, the other contractor does already have this insurance in place. It's already in place, and it's effective.
It does say there, the certificate must be included with the bid.
It doesn't say that the certificate has to be included with the bid, yes. And all we've got's a quote. And also, I mean, I don't understand why we'd be wanting to submit someone else right now. This person's, I mean, is obviously a little bit higher than Mr. Meredith's. But, I've talked to Mr. Sprinkles. He has not shown me anything, any reason whatsoever that we need to serve someone else. We've got a person that's already proven that he's doing the job. There was a few issues earlier part in the year. It's like a couple of us have discussed already. But, as far as Mr. Sprinkles was concerned, from what I've talked to him, everything was taken care of, and was no problem after that. So, you know, I'm just, I'm a, I've always wanted to lean toward proof positive. You know, somebody that's already been doing the work for us. And like I said, he is the low bidder in this thing, so.
I'm just basing that on what the lawns look like when I toured the schools.
Yeah, I understand that. And I think Mr. Meredith was confronted that by Mr. Sprinkles, and made aware of the situation, and corrected the problem. And there wasn't no problem after that. So, you know, also, at the beginning of the year, we had a real rainy season. So, I mean, it's hard to, I know, I can't mow my yard every spring, so. You know, I'm not trying to jockey for nobody here in no situation. But, I just think that we've got somebody that's already been doing the job. He's the low bidder, again. And we should be good stewards of the money and try to do what's right, you know? If Mr. Sprinkles don't have an objection to him, and don't have a problem, he's the one that has to deal with him. I don't have to deal with him, other than walking by and seeing the facilities. So, I mean, I'm just, I'm just going by what I've been told. And I think we ought to accept the low bid. But, you know, we're all members here of the board. We can do whatever we want to do and make the decision, so.
Well, we've got a motion and a second. I think we'll see where it goes. I mean, I have nothing against Merida Lawn Service, but I wish the crews would pay more attention to what they're doing. And I know the owner of the company had other work. But, this is his company. He should have been out there double-checking this. Now, I'm like Ms. Runyon. I've went to my schools, and I know they wasn't no weed-eating coming in behind the mowing. I've went highs two weeks without weed eating done. So, we've got a motion and a second. I think we'll see where it goes.
Mr. Hinkle?
No.
Dr. Ashburn?
No.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
I vote yes, Mr. Meredith. Item B, discuss and take action on bid for chemical service for athletic fields 2020 calendar year.
Okay, we only had one submit, bid submitted for that, and that was Turf Works. And that's who also currently has the contract.
I make the motion, we approve.
Second.
I vote yes, Mr. Hinkle.
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Dr. Ashburn?
Yes.
Mr. Meredith? Item 5.
3C.
There is no 3C.
Yeah, fuel refresh, it's there.
Item C, discuss and take action on BG4 for closeout, Train's performance contract.
Okay, so this is the closeout substantial completion for the energy savings contract that we've just completed with Train. And I will say this, if you look on that BG4, with the total price of the contract, net total of change orders to contract, zero. So, that's always a good thing when we don't have change orders, so. I would recommend that the board approve. We still will have one final payment. I think there was about $20,000. So, they'll probably submit that in January. Yeah, warranty kicks in.
I make the motion, we approve.
I'll second the motion.
I vote yes. Dr. Ashburn?
Yes.
Mr. Hinkle?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Item 5, teaching and learning. Discuss and/or take action on two special needs students, shortened school week slash day waiver.
It's Article 4.
Article 4.
I don't have the article.
You got four on there? Yeah.
Nope, now I've got it on here, but I don't have it on here.
Yeah, right there.
My bad. Discuss and/or take action on reciprocal agreement for 2020, 2021.
Okay, you have in your packet the current reciprocal agreements for each of our neighboring school districts.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a change to this and ask that the board approve a 15-person reduction in this, since we've been doing this year after year. The reasoning behind this, I'll go ahead and give the reasoning behind this. 15 people is not a big difference. It's not a big, you know, big change that each school has to have. It takes us down from the 370 that we're already at, down to 355. If you look at Corbin Independent, I've got these numbers. I don't have them in front of you all, but there's the, I asked Mr. Sprinkles for this information.
They have.
Corbin has 356. If we bring it down to 355, that's only going to affect them by one person. That's next year, as far as bringing, picking, you know, new students in and everything. It doesn't affect students that are there now. They're grandfathered in, and they continue on. As far as the next biggest school, it's Barbell Independent. It doesn't even get close to affecting any of their numbers that they have. I think this is something that our board needs to continually work on and try to get, you know, try to get more under control. Because, you know, as everyone of you know, the population of students that we have in this school is how much money we receive from the state. And we need to try to get this corralled in a little bit more. If I'm not mistaken, about three or four years ago, this thing was at 410 or some 405. So, we've worked a little bit to bring this in. If you figure that amount up, me and Mr. Sprinkles talked about it, it's about, what, Kelly, about $200,000 that's helped in our school system. You know, corralling this in, getting a little bit closer. If you match it to the other school, not counting Corbin and Barbe, I mean, Barbell Independent, then you're looking at very, very low numbers. So, in this time, in our, in our system, the way our school system is right now, the budget is everything. If you don't keep it under control and try to work with it and do the best you can, then you're going to suffer at the end. So, I ask that we make a change and drop this down to 355. I make a motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Hinkle?
Yes.
Dr. Ashburn?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
I vote no. Item 5, teaching and learning. Discuss and/or take action on two special needs students, shortened school week and day waiver.
Okay, these are recommendations from an ARC, so I recommend that the board approve.
I make a motion, we approve.
I'll second the motion.
I vote yes. Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Hinkle?
Yes.
Dr. Ashburn?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Item 6, resources and support systems. Discuss and/or take action on staffing.
Okay, I have three items currently in this one. The first one is to approve a new salary schedule for the Save the Children coordinators due to a national pay increase. So, that would actually go up to $15 an hour at an annual of $28.8. And of course, this will be paid strictly out of the grant. Will be no additional cost to the district. The other item that I have is to approve a $500 stipend for elementary dance team sponsors. Several years ago, the board approved a $500 stipend for elementary cheerleading sponsors. But, at that point in time, we did not address the dance teams. And of course, I've got some elementary principals back here. And Mr. Frost was there at one time, and so was I. Those, they bring in the crowd. Those dance teams absolutely bring in the crowd. So, we just kind of want to be able to provide just a little support for those sponsors that work with those kids. And the last item is to approve matching state reimbursement for National Board Certified Teachers, up to $2,000 in addition to the district base. Currently, we are already paying a stipend of $2,000 for National Board Certified Teacher. The state is supposed to reimburse us for that amount, but they never reimburse us for that full amount. But, we've just recently had, and we'll be recognizing them at a board meeting, we just recently had three teachers to achieve the National Board Certification. It's a very difficult strenuous process to be able to become nationally board certified. We want to encourage and increase that number of National Board Certified Teachers, because that improves classroom instruction, therefore, that improves student achievement, and it helps our district out even more. So, the way this is, the way we have this worded is, we will match whatever the state contribution is up to a total of $4,000. If the state were to reimburse us for $2,000, then we would match that, so that teacher would receive a $4,000 stipend. If the state only sends $1,000 reimbursement, we'll match that, and that teacher will get the base of $2,000. So, the lowest they'll ever receive will be $2,000. The most they will receive under this scenario will be $4,000. And basically, the way it will work out is, we'll be splitting the cost with the state. So, we'll match whatever contribution they make. I hope, and through the budget process and legislation, that they make sure that they put in enough money to support those nationally board certified teachers. Also, it's not a lifetime contract. Teachers who are nationally board certified are required to renew their certificates every so many years. So, we will base this stipend upon them maintaining that certification over the course of time. So, again, I'm very thrilled that we do have three additional teachers. I think that will make us five now district-wide. At one time, we had eight or nine. So, we want to build that back up to start to encourage those teachers to pursue this. We'll vote it together, given since they're staffing. I mean, you can split them out if you want to, or you can do them together.
I make a motion, we approve.
I'll second the motion.
I vote yes. Dr. Ashburn?
Yes.
Mr. Hinkle?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Meredith? Item 7, other action items with discussion. Discuss and/or take action on out-of-state trips.
Okay, two out-of-state trips. The Linkham High School JAG Leadership Academy, and also Knox Central High School's baseball team, which will be going to Myrtle Beach in the spring.
Make a motion.
I second the motion. I vote yes. Mr. Hinkle?
Yes.
Dr. Ashburn?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Item 8, I make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
I vote yes. Dr. Ashburn?
Yes.
Mr. Hinkle?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.